One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community in charge of conducting, with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law, but are not open forms for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests, following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. For a total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. If we do have visitors tonight, we can go over the directions more clearly at that point. Carla, could you take roll call, please?
Ms. Harding, here.
Mr. Hyde.
Mrs. Thompson, here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Mrs. Jumper Davis.
Present.
Mrs. Jesus.
Mrs. Emerson, here.
Oh, Mr. Lamb.
I'm here as well.
Mr. Spelstra, I get all flustered because I'm like.
You're all right, Carla. We're all here except for Jeff. He'll be here, I think, later. Okay, so we have some presentations tonight. By the looks of it, Mr. Beulah is here with his cross-country teams. Mr. Beulah, back there.
All right. We'll go now?
Yes, please, sir.
Awesome. Fantastic. Let's do it. All right, we'll start with this one. This is kind of like had been our goal. We've been, this is kind of like in the gym, kind of the board, like the top four for all our, for all our OAE sports teams. Baseball, football, and cross-country, we've had the only team so far programs to be top four in the state is what we're going for. And as you see, the best so far, two thousand and six, our football team lost in the finals. And right now, our cross-country team, we're trying to, we're trying to make our way. We got third, these gentlemen got third in the state this fall, which is historic, amazing, as we all know. And we were kind of joking, two thousand and three, we were talking before, was my junior year with Coach Goldstein. And Tully beat us, Tully beat us. And I showed him all the pictures. It was crazy. Tully went one-two in the race because they had some lost boys from Sudan. And then went to, and Lucas, Lucas LeMond, if you still look up, was, he carried the flag in the Beijing Olympics. The picture is him and George, President George W. Bush. We lost to Olympian and his brother from Sudan. But God bless these, a family from Tully. Took five people in from Sudan. Not good for us.
You're not better, you're not better at all.
No, not at all. Oh, my God. But this is, this is where we're.
You've definitely made it past that.
This is our goal as a program, is kind of selfishly, we would like to be the first team to bring home the state title for OAE. But we have great competition here. So this is just from, you guys all see that, that's in the gym. That's kind of. All right. So we have a very long slideshow here. But I, we would, this is what we showed this year, if we had in our, our team banquet. But just wanted to highlight that we do have, these are the men who ran in sectionals and states. Our, this is our total teams. For cross-country, you can only have varsity, technically top seven on the line, kind of deal. But we have like our JV, our varsity B runners. So we're a much bigger team than this, our program. These are just the gentlemen who are kind of qualified to sectionals, if that kind of makes sense. Like in football, the other ball sports, you bring everyone. The ninth grade kid has just been carrying the water all day. Oh, yeah. You're on, you're on, you know, you're on the sideline. Unfortunately, for cross-country track, it's not quite like that. Definitely got to deserve their spot because these guys have. Oh, yes, we go to Hamlin Beach. Thank you, Mr. Luxon. And we're always watching. Sorry, we won't go through the whole thing. Oh, hit refresh? Fantastic. Oh, it was tough. It was, it was almost a three-hour banquet in November. We won't pitch you through that. Here we go. So we want to thank you guys for giving us permission to go to the Burn Hills Invitational, the fantastic opportunity. Amazing competition. Burn Hills Invitational is raised at Saratoga Springs, which you know is a turning point of the American Revolution. For us, that was huge. Fantastic competition. Connor won the race, four races all day. Is, you don't want to race against the same teams over, and you see the same GR teams, but yeah. It was a great life experience. Some of our, some people from our program, men's and women's came, we saw. Never been to a hotel before. You know, this was never been out, you know. We had some great experiences and the team paid for everything. All they had to pay for is a Saturday, Saturday lunch between the Dash in the Dark. We appreciate your support in the Dash in the Dark. That fundraising took all the hotel from them, the food, the parents fundraised for the boss. Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity. It was huge. And for the Dash in the Dark, we try to cap it at sixty teams. These people are banging down the doors that come in. Their campus can only hold so many, but maybe the building project probably holds some more. I mean, we held the Dash in the Dark during COVID. You guys allowed that. Thank you very much. We held sectionals, like Section Five had no idea where to hold sectionals. We had class C and D right here, Oakfield event. It was an amazing moment. If you remember, if this remembers that, we were going to host A and B here all day, but they were too like hoity-toity, like, oh, they don't want to go feel for sectionals. But we hosted it and Section Five didn't know what to do, and we definitely answered the call. And thank you for your cooperation because it gives our student athletes opportunity to compete. Sorry, this is a long presentation. But this is kind of cool to see. You know, cross-country track is all about numbers. It's like, oh, how am I doing soccer practice? Well, I don't know. Very, you know, very subjective, not, not here in cross-country. So our women had a fantastic season, as you see. Our women finished, we got here seventh in sectionals, twenty-first overall. But the coolest part is our men did win. We finally beat Artport, Candace area. They, they beat us unfortunately four years in a row. We finally got them. But if you, if you take all day of all the people who raced of cross-country sectionals, it's all electorally state park. There were eighty, eighty teams. Out of eighty teams, we were finished twelfth. So that's kind of crazy. Meaning for our boys, out of fifteen A teams, these guys would be eight of them, class A. Out of the thirteen B schools, these guys beat nine of them. Out of class C, we beat every class E team except once, then obviously we beat the whole class D competition. So not only are these guys amazing, class D student athletes, they can compete, compete against, against all Section Five. Eighty schools and we finished twelfth. That's nuts. So it's kind of cool to kind of see that comparison. Obviously, the As, the Bs, the Cs, and Ds, we run at different times, but this is a merge result, if that, if that makes sense. Keep on going real quick. Sorry. There is, I think there's eighty slides. And this was a long one, right, Mr. Taylor? After your first one, I apologize.
It was great, though.
Oh, you're too sweet. We had a lot, a lot of liquid. No one's high, you know, passing out. Lot of water. Yeah. May have to refresh this again. And this one is highlighting Connor's achievements. He's senior, as we know. Connor, as we kind of say, is a once-in-a-generational talent. He has all our records here at Oakfield, Alabama, which is quite impressive if it does kind of show up. Okay. So Connor for indoor has a mile record, the two-mile record. For outdoor, he's got the mile record, the two-mile record, the steep look chase record. He's got our fastest time ever in the Queen Invitational. We've been running that since the nineteen eighties. So then this slide is going to show all the people who ran, I think it was four hundred and seventy-nine people who ran in sectionals. He had the second fastest time of, of everyone. So here he is. So it was just Connor, obviously. So out of, sorry, four hundred and fifty-two toll runners ran in sectionals. He would come on a second if we were all ran together. And his buddy from Fairport just beat him fifteen-twenty-sixth to fifteen-twenty-seven. Only nine tenths of a second. So it's just kind of cool to kind of put things in perspective. But as you know, cross-country is brutal. We always keep busy. There is not many breaks. And these guys have obviously, to be at this level is commitment. I mean, it's diet. The biggest thing is what they're eating, to be honest. What they're eating, they got to sleep a ton. It's a lot of sacrifices. You know, in the summer, your buddies, oh, let's go out, we're doing this, we're staying out, we're sleepover. These guys would be, no, I got practice with Beulah at seven in the morning. I mean, that takes discipline to say, no, I want to do the right thing for myself and the team. And these guys do it constantly. And as Mr. Montreux and I talk about this all the time, cross-country, the blue-collar sport is character building. If you do cross-country, indoor, outdoor wrestling is the same. By God, you're going to be an amazing, amazing person. They're going to handle anything, anything that life kind of throws in front of them. I was blessed that I finally joined the team my freshman year, changed the trajectory of my life. I was going the right way, I think. But it got me into some new Geneseo, and it just, once again, you know, we allow these opportunities for these students. They're going to be lifelong learners, tons of millions. So we appreciate your support constantly. Mr. Luxon, let's just go to any place. He's amazing for our team bonding. Thank you for the team bonding trips. Always bowling. We're going to Canal Side for our ice skating in the winter. I mean, that's, we go out to eat at, first, we were going out at the gigantic, used to be the one-fifty-one kind of deal. That was horrible. We changed right by the, we were there forever now. Now we're going to Pearl Street, go to Pearl Street, we go ice skating. On the worst case imaginable, no one's sharpening those things, you know. But the opportunities there, we appreciate you guys doing that for us. Congratulations to the guys. Unless you want me to go in a couple more, but no, I'm kidding.
Well, students and, and team and Coach Beulah, you make us, make us very proud. And, you know, every time you, you left, we, we clapped for you, we cheered for you and waited for the results. And they came back better than what we could ever possibly imagine. Connor, congratulations to you and your accomplishments and the team as a whole. Made us very proud and we're looking forward to that state championship.
Yeah, we're trying, we're grinding for. Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Awesome.
Mike, you're up, if you're ready.
Perfect timing.
Do you have time to exhale from, from the drive?
Yeah, I'm good.
Perfect timing.
I have.
I can get it now for you.
Try something a little different for those of you that have been on the board in the past. Instead of giving you a little packet with a bunch of numbers in it, I just put together a little PowerPoint this time, just hits on the key financial items for the district for the year. Hopefully, you've had a chance to browse through the, the financial statements and, and other financial information that was in the, in the board docs this week. So what I handed out here is really just the, the key highlights that, that I want to mention. And then, you know, if you folks have any questions about anything that's in here or anything that's not in here that you saw in your packet, we can, we can talk about that. But so if you want to open right up, we talked about the general fund. And overall, the general fund had a total fund balance increase of just over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars during the two thousand and twenty-three school year. But with that, the unassigned fund balance of the district decreased by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that's, that's because in the prior year, the, the unassigned fund balance was in excess of four percent of next year's budget, which is the real property tax law. So, so this year, it came back down within that four percent, which is obviously a good thing. No more slap on the wrist for that. And then the district was able to fund one point one million dollars into the capital reserve to, to help go for that new capital project growth that's coming up here in the district. And then just to highlight this year, the reserves generated about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in interest. Banks are finally paying interest again, and the district is utilizing the funds on hand to, to generate some revenues. You know, so that's a positive thing. We haven't seen in a number of years, really, interest earnings. And we still have some districts that, that aren't really taking advantage of the opportunity, but, but Oakfield here is. I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that and highlighted that. And then you can see on the expense side of the budget, there was a surplus of about one point three million dollars, which is really, really a very comfortable place to be. You know, items from the comptroller's office indicate that a four to eight percent range on your, on your budget is, is a good place to be. And that puts Oakfield at about five point six percent. So very comfortable there, I think. Good, good budgeting practices, good budgets being, and reasonable budgets being put forth by the board. So I wanted to commend you on that. Flipping over to the next page. You know, a couple of highlights. The school lunch fund did operate at a deficit in the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Lost about thirty-three thousand dollars. Not necessarily a bad thing, but whenever there's a loss, you know, we want to make sure we're mentioning that, keep an eye on that. I know that was planned in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, but we'll still highlight that. We do still indicate that the fund balance that remains in the school lunch fund is still in excess of the federal regulations. And I anticipate that that will continue. But again, that's one of those things that, because that's the federal regulations say there shouldn't be more than three months' worth of average expenditures and fund balance. We'll highlight it. I wouldn't suggest going out and spending all the money building a, a new restaurant to serve the kids lunch through. But we will, you know, we do, do want to mention that. With the special aid fund is where the district records all the, the state and federal grant money that comes into the district. So you will see the district had just over two million dollars in expenses and revenues in the special aid fund during two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. You know, and just to highlight that, of that two million dollars, almost one point one million was stimulus funding. The federal stimulus funds, and those funds will all be spent by September of next year. So just keep an eye on those and make sure that you're communicating and, and being aware of if there are any programs or any positions in there that are going to have to come up with a new funding source after those stimulus funds expire a year from now. And that will return the special aid fund down to a more normal level for, for the district. The, the last page in here, you know, we talked about the capital projects fund. District spent just over two point one million dollars, pretty much completing that, that last capital project, the two thousand and twenty, fifteen million dollar project was just about all spent up. And then I did want to mention, this year in the financial statements, you'll see the district had a debt service fund. Not something the district has, has ever had before, but because the district refunded a bond during the two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year, the accounting required us to, to show a debt service bond to, to record some transactions related to the refunding of that bond. So, you know, probably a one-time thing. Who knows what's going to happen. There may be some additional refundings in the coming year. But just to, to highlight that, in case you're comparing the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two financial statements. Nothing really in the real world changed, just from an accounting standpoint. We had to add that fund in for, for that refunding. You know, so like I said, that's a really quick run through the, the highlights of the financial statements. Do you have any, folks have any questions? Or do you prefer the, the method I used last year with all the numbers? Because I did prepare that for you, too.
No, I think you've given us the information ahead of time in the reports that you gave us. And then this is just kind of a down and dirty kind of overview of this. And I feel very comfortable with where we stand within that audit. It appeared that there was just a couple of things. One was the cafeteria, the other was signing off.
Signing off on payroll certifications.
And then from there, I can't think of anything else that really was standing out to me. And as far as the, that when you say a loss, I agree, everybody cringes that we lost thirty-three thousand, but I think that that was appropriate in relation to how much.
It was planned, it was planned.
Right.
So what, so one of the planned uses of the, the fund balance in there that was allowable was how, that was in effect caused by us doing the free meals in the springtime.
Right. And I, I think it's acceptable because we're running at that more than three months, much more.
Yeah.
Three months.
Pretty significantly.
Yeah. So it's just something that I think we have to be cognizant of. And I, I like how you tell, here's, explain, it was right at that five percent. Like four percent between eight and we're at five. And I don't, I don't know what else we have as far as questions go, but I feel like this is a solid audit for us.
And overall, I think the, the district's in a pretty good financial condition right now. You know, coming into some potentially difficult state budget years and, you know, a couple of years out, I think Oakfield, Alabama's in a pretty good place right now. And like you mentioned, the other comments, we didn't have any significant efficiencies or material weaknesses. So I'd say it's a pretty positive audit report as well.
And then as far as the stimulus funding, you said we should kind of keep track of that as well. We should just keep an eye on where that level is and then make sure that it's used and that if it's going to impact any positions, then we'll make sure we'll have a plan in place for the following budget.
Most important thing is make sure you spend it, you know, take advantage of the, the funds while they're there.
Because you don't use it.
Right. It's going to, it's going to go back to Washington and who knows what happens from there.
I think in your report, there was one of the funds that you said we could draw from if we were short in a particular operating year. Was it the retirement fund or benefit fund? One of them was in that two million range that maybe was overfunded and could be available to us.
Yeah, there was the, the ERS reserve.
Yeah, there's, yeah, just over two million dollars in the, in, in that reserve. And, you know, that's a bill that the district has to pay every year. So that's an, an easy one and a good one to use through the, through the budgeting process to, to demonstrate the use of them.
And in, in the board agenda for approval is the reserve plan. And that information is in there that talks about how, how much our funding would be. So, you know, projecting on a five-year average or five-year total would be like one point five million in that expenditure. And we are funded at two point one. So that, that.
Was it maybe in that report that I read that?
That's what it is.
That we could draw that down.
We could, we could use that to pay for a, for a year of, or two or, or more.
If revenue dried up, some particular service dried up, there's something there that could be used.
Absolutely. That's a reserve.
For sure.
We also have, we also have the, you know, the, the unemployment reserve, which is overfunded. You know, I'm sure we would, you know, that would be an option for us as well. And that's about four hundred thousand dollars.
What, what, the, not.
Are you looking at the reserve plan?
I am, I am. I, yeah, I, yeah.
So the, if you're looking for that reserve, it's on pay, it's the.
Fourth page, right.
Actually, very first one is the ERS reserve. That's the retirement contribution, which is sitting at two, two point one million dollars right now.
So, no, I was, I was looking at this earlier today and for the retirement re- reserve, is this, is this something that school districts are mandated to have? Like you should have, like it says here that you should have a projection of five years out, right? Of retirement billing or something, something along that line?
And districts can make their own plan. If you, if you say you want ten years, and that's the board's policy, and you've adopted that policy, then we can fund up to that.
Because it seemed, obviously, that that, that's going to increase as we, we move down the road. And, and how do we draw, how does that number get driven, like?
Well, as you could see, it earned seventy-six thousand interest because we've invested over in New York class funding. So we're getting a higher interest rate on these by using that, that investment tool. So, yeah, that will increase and we can, you know, consider in future budget years, if things do get lean, if there is a year that, you know, state aid isn't what it should be, you know, we lose another revenue source, you know, helping us to balance the budget. You know how each year we, we come up with that appropriated fund balance that we, we typically do about six hundred thousand dollars? You know, if there's a year where we're going to be shorter and we need to do seven hundred thousand dollars instead, we could do a hundred from here. So you can, this is one that can help us with balancing our budget in the springtime. Absolutely.
But I guess what I was, what I was wondering is, do we look at potential retirees? And say, these are the people that could potentially retire within the next five years and then generate this fund?
It's not really that. That's.
This reserve, I'm not looking at the, the document, but.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I apologize. Maybe I shouldn't even be referencing this.
No, that's, no, that's fine. But the, that employee retirement reserve is for the annual ERS bill that comes. So that's just based on percentages of salaries. The district does have another reserve. That's a few pages later, probably, the bonus benefit.
Yeah.
Contribution.
Liability reserve. That is the one that's going to be used for specific retiree payments or that could be used for that, for unused accrued time when someone has separation.
And right now, that's sitting at nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
But that one seemed different to me. That seemed as if you were leaving opposed to retiring.
Correct. This is, this is, well, this is. It could be leaving or retiring.
Depends on the contract and what employees are entitled to if they, if they leave.
Basically, yeah. Yeah. We try and keep it, it are, it's supposed to be funded to the level of our other post-employment benefit.
No, the compensated absences.
The compensated absences. So our compensated absences at June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three was one million forty-seven, one million forty-seven thousand, eight fifty-nine. We're, this is funded at nine hundred and thirty-one. So it's appropriately funded. This would be if everybody retired tomorrow or everyone left tomorrow, this is what we would have to pay out to them for their accrued.
Sick time.
Sick or leave time, leave time according to their contract terms.
Okay. All right.
That would be that. I don't anticipate that being used, but if there was a year where we had a large, you know, someone retiring with a, a significant contribution, a significant leave time accrued, again, we could balance, if we knew that, and we knew that was coming up that next year, we could reduce this if we wanted to and use that also, like we do the, could use the other one to help balance the budget.
Anything else, guys?
No questions.
Well, thank you.
Well, I appreciate your time this evening.
Thanks for driving online. Bringing the weather. Thanks. Have a great night.
All right. Next up, let's see here, we got Connie, Lynn, and Matt for some New York State assessment data and regions results.
Okay, so it's that time of the year again. We quoted this very similarly to last year. So as we go through, whether it's the three through eight, whether it's the regions, we looked at the Genesee Valley region score, which those aren't perfect scores. Sometimes we have to gather that information from the district. Sometimes BOCES helps us with that. So it's not the perfect end-all when you go, when the state publishes everything, these might be off by a little bit. It's what we internally gather.
You'll see there's a note on some of the later slides, but when you get a report that they provide for you from BOCES, it's cut and dry. Here is the regional average and here's how we stack up. We didn't get that report this year for some reason. So what we did is worked around it, reached out to the individual counterparts in each, each of the schools and just compiled a list that contains most of the schools.
So we will be at or about the Genesee Valley region. Remember, we're talking about the Genesee Valley region. We're talking over. We have over twenty-two component districts. I think we averaged twenty-two component districts in our region. So when you're looking at this data, this is us compared to over twenty other districts. I have no idea what the next one is.
I, yeah. I don't have a memory.
He closed the tab that I needed to open.
That's a weird story. It's a really weird story.
Well, yeah, right now, I look back at it. Man, I ain't get any action out of that.
Okay. So, grade three. So this was, these are this year's fourth graders. So they're first time taking a test. If you look ELAs on the left, we had fifty-one students who tested. Fifteen of them tested at the proficient level, which the state determines to be level three or four. So that was twenty-nine percent of our third graders last year tested proficient. GV region was thirty-one percent. So although, yes, we are below the region, we're in the ballpark. For math, for math, we test, fifty students tested. We had twenty-three proficient, so fourteen. For math, for math, we test, 50 students tested, we had 23 proficient, so 46%. The GB region was at 41%, so we were above the GB region for math. Fourth grade, so this year's fifth graders, you can see ELA in math, same formulas in terms of tested and what the other numbers are, so we were. You, you should not be doing this. 37% in the region, so we are 39% for ELA and 48% for math and we get 49%, so doing well. Fifth grade, so this year's sixth graders, ELA, we're at 44% proficiency, so above the region. For math, we were at 30% proficiency, so below the region. Sixth grade, so this year's seventh graders, we were above the region for both, we had 56, 6% proficiency in ELA. We had 75% proficiency in math.
Sixth grade beat most of the region.
Yeah.
Sure did.
Seventh grade, ELA, we're at 48%, so above the region, at math, we're at 42%, below the region. And then eighth grade, we were 61% for ELA, so above the region, 33% for math, so below the region. So, this is a new slide, so Lynn and I have the last couple of years, but, okay, so we still have so many districts who are paper-based. And the state is phasing in now, districts are slowly having to give computer-based tests, that they have to phase this in until they're fully computerized. Oakfield has been doing, since I got here, it's been fully computer, and we've always felt that there's a difference. We've asked GB for the, GB BOCES if they could obtain the information like they obtained these other numbers and they've said no to us since I've been here. So this year, Lynn's like, well, let's get it ourselves. So, this reporting literally is me reaching out to our districts and saying, hey, we created a spreadsheet, who did for what grade level? CBT, which is a computer, or PBT, which is the paper. 20 districts got back to us, so this is based on 20 of our 22 districts. So, on the left in kind of that maroonie color, that's the composite, so that's everybody where we ranked in our region. So if you look for ELA, we were first for sixth grade, second for eighth grade, third for fifth grade, those are all the top 25%. We ranked sixth for seventh and ninth for fourth, those are in the top 50%. Compared to computer and paper, we were 13th in third grade. Then, we went back and looked, okay, what do we look like compared to just other computer-based schools? And you'll notice that there is a little bit of a shift, in third grade, we jumped up to 10th. Fourth grade, we jumped up to seventh, fifth grade, we jumped up to second, you can't get higher than first, so we stayed at first and sixth. Seventh grade stayed the same, and eighth grade stayed the same. So, when compared to the region, I think with ELA, do we always have room for growth? Absolutely, we are holding our own, I think, pretty well. Math, we did the exact same thing, computer and paper composite on the left, just computer on the right. Interesting, in third grade, you notice that jump again, this is the first year these kids are taking, number one, taking tests that are standardized. And then to put them on a computer, it, it's a lot for these kids. We went up in math, we jumped from being in the 50th or bottom 50% to being in the top 25% just by comparing computer-only tested students. Fourth grade, you see, we went up from 10th to sixth, fifth grade from 18th to 15th, again, sixth grade, you can't go higher than first. Seventh and eighth, these, there were a lot of ties going on, a lot of equal scores, so we had a three-way tie for 14th altogether. When we compared just computer, it was a tie for 12th, and then again, eighth grade, we tied for 14th and then went up to 13th. So just a little bit of a different perspective that Lynn and I were super curious about what this would look like. So, just reaching out to colleagues, so this is not any kind of perfect data, you're not going to find this kind of data on the state really sites. This is just us asking the questions and trying to kind of make sense of things. So, that's just something that we added.
So Connie, out of the 20, how, how many are straight CBT, did you, did you mention that? How many?
Straight CBT, I'd have to go back and look at our spreadsheet. Yeah.
So I feel like it's about a shift where most, like, you don't, you think it's.
We still have some that are straight.
I, we are a candle.
Are you, okay.
We're fighting because as soon as we go CBT, our, our scores are going to drop.
Yeah, some schools, so some of the districts are gradually doing it, a lot of our colleagues, they put little notes like, we just did two, two grade levels this year, next year we're going to try to do that, some did, okay, we're just doing third. Oh, ELA, or just ELA, some did just math, there's a lot of different approaches to it.
I think there's only three schools that are only paper-based and everything. And everybody else is dabbling in at least one subject area.
At least one grade level or, or two, slow to roll out.
Yep.
I kind of wish we had done this before, we could reach out to our colleagues, because it's more and more district.
But it's not out there, we're currently doing it right now because only one grade level is going to be CBT this year and they're freaking out.
Right.
And it's like, why?
It's harder, it really is.
Just the note-taking process is, is challenging for ELA.
Learning the tools, how to annotate, how to, how to not get lost, because when you look at the questions and you, they have the eliminator of the answers and you can cover the screen, but it's so easy for a third grader to get distracted and it's now becoming a, a fun game. And they're not even focused on what they're reading and they're not paying attention, so building the stamina to even take that kind of a test. We've probably driven Rob crazy over the last four years because he keeps saying we need better stylists, we need better stylists. They can't read their handwriting, especially for the math part, and he's, he's done math for us. He gets us the best of the best, which helps us, but it is a really hard way for kids to take tests.
I think though, I-RAT is, is beneficial for you, right?
I think those computer-based practices where you're taking.
It gives you some exposure at least.
Correct, you know, I-RAT, Excel, even Xoom for some schools. But the idea is building that stamina and having seat time and focusing and maintaining that focus for a duration of time. So that's some of the reasons why we do that practice as well.
So, so when you guys look at this data then, does that help you to generate goals for like your half a days for superintendent's days?
Yep, and that's a segue to January. January, we, Matt and I are going to be inviting a group of teachers that are focusing on three through eight. Looking at the data that we are presenting to you, but what they do with it behind the scenes and how they're setting goals within the cohorts and classrooms and then driving decisions for us, so.
Yeah, in fact, what you'll see, again, this is a lot of numbers without the context, it might not mean a ton other than where we stack up regionally. But in the next few months, you'll have department leaders from the content areas and also the grade levels to come in and talk about how they'll use this data to drive the instruction.
Ultimately, we'd love to see goals based on this data and say, well, you know, central message or main idea is a deficit in grades three through six and this is what we're going to do to improve that and then see if they're met in the following year. Because you look at some of these grade levels and it's tough, it's the 18th, right, that's not, that's rough. That's really rough, 18 out of 20, we've got, we've got growth, we've got to, we, we've got to have happen here. Not the rain on the parade, but I, I.
Yeah. No, and you'll hear from the teachers, you'll hear too, math and lit team, we talk about math and lit team a lot, they've really been diving into the item analysis.
It's looking at our resources and if they meet the needs of our children, and the answer may be no.
So they're going to have those conversations with you and like Lynn said, that drives what we do. Science, so this year there was no fourth grade science test because we have all new standards, Justin loves that, all new standards. They did do the old eighth grade test, so O A, we ranked, or we hit 72%. Region was 62%, so we were above the region. So this was the last administration of the MST-aligned science exam. This spring, it'll be, the fourth or elementary will shift to fifth grade. And it'll stay in eighth grade for middle school level and it will be the first administration of the next generation aligned standards. It's very, very different, and through all the curriculum work, we keep hearing over and over and that's, you know, we keep, I keep telling you, it's different for science. We have to treat science differently, the state puts it right out there. Common Core, ELA and math, yeah, they're a little different than the next gen, but they're not that different. Science is a hole in ball wax, whether it is three through eight science or whether it's our Regents exams. So that's something that we're tackling on many levels, so it'll be interesting to see next year what that data looks like. So, that's three through eight.
And the Regents scores here are presented the same way, there's some footnotes in regard to how we gather the data. But what you'll see is we're either at or above the region or within like a percentage point. So when I look at the data overall, I think that it's generally good news as we compare ourselves to other regions. So in our science department, again, green is good, we're, we're either above or right on pace with, with the region. And I broke these all down by department, social studies, same thing. And then with math, again, just with a percentage off for algebra and algebra two, there are some years we were, we were number one in algebra, so this is. We're right there with the rest of the region, and then ELA at 83% close to the GB region, but again, these numbers here are unofficial for now. More important than presenting all of this, I think is what you'll hear next month. First, we have two departments coming in, it's ELA and science. They're going to talk about how they use this data and the item analysis and what they do with it, you mentioned goals, they'll talk about their process for that. And then we have AP numbers here structured the same way, within our English department here, the total number of students. I always looked at AP as two different sets of data, one is how many kids are showing up, how many kids are challenging themselves. It was always more than just a number for me, what they scored on an exam. It was about learning those skills, time management and challenging yourself. So, and within our English department, we have 15 students who sit for exams, and this is how they stack up against the state and against all the tasks given internationally and nationally. So again, green, within social studies, one of the numbers that strikes me here is the sheer number of kids that are sitting for exams. This is more than 50% of all the AP exams are within our social studies department, so that's a positive number. You can see how we stack up again against the state and against internationally with these three exams here.
Going back to the, the first, when we were talking, it looked like that sixth grade, you know, obviously those kids are doing really good. I think you guys have really put a lot into the ELA the last couple of years, so we can kind of look like, okay, well, maybe we're struggling, we're a little behind on the math now, but when you look at how that program goes through, like obviously the sixth graders picked it up, and how does our program, not all kids are the same, right? So I would say that obviously that, that fifth grade group we, in there, we know that that's been a challenging group coming through the school. How do our systems kind of allow that flexibility to adjust to the kids rather than saying, you know, this is what we do, you've got to fit in this box to where we can kind of, so our system kind of lets us adjust to the kids in that, those grades coming through?
Ideally.
I know it's not an easy, like an easy question.
It's a tough question, but I think ideally all instruction can respond to those individual needs and be flexible. And we try and structure that into something that we preach all the time now with, you know, hitting tier one instruction with everyone in the room and then identifying who needs layers of instruction and intervention beyond that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the best I can do.
So the additional helps, kind of where you can kind of adjust and flex.
The extra support through your reading specialist, your math specialist, having the accountability in our schedule. So it's really important that Matt and I create a time and space for those interventions to take place. And we call it MTSS, but that has to be a part of our scheduling moving forward and to be consistent and to be able to meet those needs. We also have layers with the special ed cohorts, so making sure that teachers that are, the homeroom teachers have access to your co-teachers and that they can, they can plan and coexist so that they can break down the content there. There's no surprises when they're coming into a classroom, they already have ideas of how they're going to modify or adapt the lesson or even just pull a group to say, we're not really ready for that yet, I'm going to break it down and I'm going to pull in this resource that might be a grade below, spoil it through, and then we'll be able to kind of come back to the group. So, those are conversations that are really crucial for the, the teachers and planning and the way they're executing that lesson.
Well, the scheduling is crucial, Oakfield's blessed, there's a dedicated period of time, is there MTSS block at elementary? But it doesn't mean all those kids go out to interventionist, those classroom teachers are differentiating and meeting, whether it's enriching or just doing, it, pre-teach, pre-teach in the class. Up here, we have office hours, which is not that MTSS time, but between office hours and then sometimes study halls, our interventionists are able to provide sport, support for kids who need that really extra. Yeah, our classroom teachers have that opportunity and the, the office hours has been in discussion before, but they can go back and forth to the teachers they need. And maybe I just don't understand this unit in social studies, so I can, you know, go talk to Mr. Schleidenhoff for a little bit and he can help me with it. So we have built-in structures to differentiate and support for kids that, I mean, a lot of our colleagues across the region just don't have. So, you know, that's not the be-all, end-all, but that does allow us a lot more flexibility to meet the needs of not just individual students but cohorts of kids, because we do know some require a little bit extra.
Oh, there's this too, that I still think we're in the phase here where some of our goals are going to be process goals. In other words, how does this item analysis allow us to go back into our curriculum work, which we know is ongoing? And adjust that as needed from identifying the bright standards and seeing how that is tested when we, when we shape it all in our assessment. So that's a process goal that's always going to be ongoing.
But I think, Pete, you're right, I mean, there are certain cohorts that are, are going to do well. And I think the important thing is, is that you track that cohort or all of those cohorts from third grade through and compare them to what they did in the previous year, and it would be, my hope that, you know, third grade is 13th. Right, we get third grade down to seventh or eighth, and that would be great. And we kind of track that out that way and it's, it's going to be going back and evaluating are our resources matching the needs of our children? They may not be, they just, they just may not be, are they consistently being used? They may not be, and that's the only, the only way you're going to be able to determine that is, you know, by digging in and doing what you're going to do.
It's interesting comparing the ELA to math, like in that fifth grade where we're talking about, I mean, these, these kids in ELA, they're, they're obviously bright kids, right? They can learn, it just seems as though on the math side for whatever reason, it challenges them to a higher degree than these other grade levels with a gap between one and the other.
We also have to.
And that's not typical, that's not typical, usually flips.
In ELAs, these teachers are teaching everything, right? Up, well, through sixth grade, a little bit departmentalized, four, five, six. But when we made this shift in the way we approach reading, I mean, that was a heavy lift and there's only so much you can put on and ask of a teacher to learn new and to do differently, right? Like, and we chose to start with ELA, start with reading because we know that's the basis for everything. So, a lot of energy, a lot of time, blood, sweat and tears, resources have gone into really bolstering that up. And we're very aware that we need to work on math and that's, that's where we're going next. You could ask any elementary teacher, you could ask our middle school teacher, they know that's where we're going next. But it's unrealistic to ask them to do that all at once. So we just chose it as a district and you heard all about it, the last couple of years, all the shifts we've made in reading instruction. And so now that's really, I think, the teachers have a solid grasp of that. We can let that just keep running itself and now we move on and, okay, so now we tap on that.
So is there a good base of support for the behaviors? So, sitting for these long exams is tough, we do have to teach that to, to a certain level. Are you feeling prepared enough to teach and implement that skill while adding in new curriculum or new skills at the same time? Do you have enough resources at the elementary level in order to treat these behavioral issues that go on in the classroom? That prevent learning?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, I was just trying to figure out during the test.
Nope, no, dur- during the learning process. So, learning the behavioral to sit and take these tests, I, I do hear a lot of chatter that some of the classes are tougher to deal with and maybe the resource in mental health or behavioral health needs to be upped a little bit. Do you feel like you have enough resource down at the elementary level?
They actually did increase their contact time, so we have Joe Jankowski who has been doing family meetings. So he pushes in for tier one instruction, it's called our SEL, they do second stop, Sarah Wilco does the same thing. And so what Joe has been doing as of this year is once a month, he's bringing all of the fifth graders together and they're having conversations. So they're all hearing the same message, he's pushing in neatly to third, fourth and fifth. So, the kids are really excited about those opportunities to come back together and they're really using the language. They're coming in or they're sending emails, you know, as an upstander, I should report this. So, they're really starting to use that language, they're also having conversations in meetings where they're calling out their peers. You're being a bully when you do blah, 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 so they're using that language. So that's been a really positive shift for us this year, is that Joe is definitely spending more time in those family meetings where the entire cohort, all the teachers, they're all together hearing the same message, they're interacting positively. I know Jordan has jumped into a bunch of those with Melissa Hoffmeister as well, so really trying to unify that mental health support and showing those kids that there's a whole collective group of adults that are here to support you and we all know that language and we're here to, you know, listen and kind of guide you, so, so that's been a positive shift for us. And I don't know if it's an appropriate time, but for math, we are looking at math curriculum, we have a committee together that, we're calling it math conversations right now. We're looking at piloting some programs to see if there's a different program we want to purchase UPK to five or, or if we want to spend time to build our own curriculum. So, those are the very new stages of, of the math conversation. Like we said, we spent a lot of time on the ELA and the science of reading, it took a lot longer than I think any of us really anticipated for our teachers to be proficient in that, so now this is the next shift. So, we're excited for our December meeting with those faculty members that are participating, I'm going to do. I'm going to do some visits to different classrooms in different districts to kind of vet some of those materials. Eventually we'll bring teachers to do the same thing and we'll have some people kind of pilot to see and compare programs before we commit to a big purchase because Christine's going to have to budget for that. It's going to be costly, but I know we have the means to do that. So that's kind of the big goal for me moving forward. But that's it.
To talk about just Natalie, the behavioral, since even I've been in this district, the behavioral slash mental health slash council, the support team that we have built is incredible. The support that our kids have across both buildings, you know, we have additions in the social work room, we have a behavioral specialist. We have, you know, Jordan. They all work together. Like the kids don't see them as distinct, different roles, except for maybe Jordan, just because he's uniformed, right? But everybody works to support everybody. Like, so I think that helps with all of this because there is a really solid team that works across the district to support.
But we are teaching a different group of kids. I mean, that's, that's a reality right now. Families don't have the, the means that we used to have, you know? We don't have the same family dinners, the same conversations about morals and ethics and manners. And some of that stuff is spilling on to teachers and classrooms. And so finding the time and finding that resource, you know, we're kind of adding a lot to our teachers just collectively across the nation. And, and that's an area that, you know, we have to start really addressing, you know? We're not having those kids that are coming in and opening doors and is always being as polite across the board. You know, we have pockets of those families and we have a lot of eager kids that want to, you know, please, and they want to control their behaviors, but they've never even taught how or their, their models at home may not be the exact models that we want. So as far as teaching our kids, it's a very different clientele than we've ever seen. And I know that's something that Connie and I and Matt went to professional development about and kind of talked more about trauma and uses and kind of thinking about already next year, how we can talk to John about bringing more of that support in and, and help our teachers to kind of meet the kids where they're at when they come in on day one. Because when I was taught how to be a teacher, that group of kids sitting in front of me no longer exists. And, and that's some of the things that we also have to figure out how to navigate.
It is tough as a parent to know that you have a kid that's not getting the full experience in school because they're being held back because behavior of other kids in that grade. Unfortunately, you know, it does still go on and I know you guys are working very hard to get ahead of that. And I think we have built up a lot in just the last five years. But it is hard to, this is the first year that I guess I really recognize that there's things in certain groups that aren't being done because the teachers just are having a hard time controlling this group of kids. Some of the other kids are being held back kind of because of the action of others, but you know, hopefully we can keep letting things out.
And that's pretty consistent in all districts. I mean, I'm in four districts myself. Justin can speak to this as well. And I think, yes, we're raising kids in a different world than we were raised in. So I think there's a lot of societal changes that are contributing towards that. But there's also a lack of service providers out there right now, you know? And early intervention is huge. When you look at that processing, that OT, the PT, the sensory components, we just don't have the number of therapists out there to support these kids. Every week I sit in these meetings and, you know, so and so qualifies for three times sixty, two times sixty, but sorry, got a waitlist and we don't have enough providers for them. So it's, it's ways of looking at the younger grade levels. How can we start incorporating more OT, PT, CIT services into the gen ed setting? Which again, is putting even more on the teachers because now they have to incorporate those skills. But all of that year after year builds up until you see these big behaviors that we have now.
And we're also fortunate that in our district, if we have an improvement kid, we can certainly respond. Not a lot of districts do that and I don't think that a lot of people realize that. Most districts, if it's not a CSE or have a core case manager, they don't get service. And we kind of make that happen here. So if we have a student that maybe didn't qualify for a related service through an IEP, but they still could benefit from an improvement group, we figure out how to do that with OT, PT, GAN speech. So that's something that, you know, we can really be proud of because not a lot of districts have that support as well.
When is this data, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. When is this data provided to you?
It varies year to year. This year we got it so late that, I mean, the state pretty much said, you don't have to use it to do anything because we can't get it to you in a timely fashion.
Usually we have like hot off scores and it helps us with like the tier support and who needs groups and things like that this year. It just kind of is like, you need to do this, but.
So your data was based, not based off of your, your standardized testing, obviously, was based off of your, your teachers and your scores. So Mike, I'm curious, because we all as parents got our child's score mailed to us. So you also see that information?
Yes.
I'm curious to know if, especially with the younger grade levels, because that computer fatigue that I think Natalie was alluding to is, is just so prevalent. I mean, even my Annabelle will tell me she, she sometimes, she's clicking, she's not even looking at the screen. She's done, she's over it. I'm curious to know how the teachers feel the two match up? Like how they did at the end of fourth grade versus what their state testing is showing?
Well, the tests, their, their unit tests and their intrums are not as long. One of the other issues that I kind of have with the New York State testing is, and they made it so you can take as long as you need to test. And we've had kids that will test for five hours. That's just not even, no research supports that, but they're still actively working. So you can't tell them to stop testing. So I think sometimes our kids put so much pressure on themselves to read the question, read the, you know, the essay three different times and they're really trying to put their effort in, but they're so exhausted after day one that day two happens, you know? So the end of this year stuff for us is, is quick. It's a forty minute test. It's not anywhere near the hours long. You know, some of our tests we break down, I think fifth grade, they might take their interim over three days, but it's, it's a forty minute session for three days, you know, things like that. So the environment is very different too.
So you didn't get this data though prior to the start of the school year? So I guess that's my point, like speaking to what Matt was saying.
We didn't get the three through eight testing. We didn't get the AP and the regional data.
Right. So you couldn't use those scores to drive your curriculum and instruction or differentiate based on those scores because you didn't even have them, which again, now you're testing for the sake of testing and that's.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at their case and guys are looking at their power standards, but they don't always have that data.
Gotcha.
Some years they have had it, but this year was not. One of those favorable years.
To be honest, I think what happened is because it was the new standards, it's the first year they used the new ELA and the new math standards. And I think the state didn't know what to do.
They haven't fully converted to next gen?
No, this is the first year.
Oh, this is the first year they converted. Got it.
So then they scored them, but they didn't give them a one, two, three or four, right? Like, so I think that was the big decision. Oh, ooh, what is proficient going to be?
Well, it's a cut score, right? They had to decide what the cut score is going to be and they want to determine where does it fall? So like you want to see that bell curve and you don't want to see all of a sudden thirty-four percent threes and fours statewide. And then you either get these new gens, next gen standards and it drops down to like twelve percent. So then they look and then they'll kick out questions that will allow this to, to, to generate results that are palatable.
Right.
Right? So like that's the, that's, that's the bottom line of it all.
So hopefully it'll be better next year since they've done it once now with the new standards, but we'll see.
Gotcha.
We'll see.
Well, thank you. This is really personal stuff, I know. And it's hard sometimes to, to step back and look at it. But I think every time you do step back, you can see what you can do better the next time that you attack it. And it's something that's ongoing. I mean, you, you ask, you know, what I'd like to see, and I think you do, is through iReady, you want to have predictive assessments that are going to allow you to see what are they going to be able to do and are they comparable? And I think when I look at my kids' iReady assessments, they're very comparable to what they've been on the state assessments. So, you know, you look at the Laxile that's pumped out and it, and it should give you a pretty easy comparison to what they're going to get for this, for their state assessments. And if, if it's way off, if there's a huge iReady, then we've got like an iReady and I don't think we have to. So I think, you know, you're right on the right path here. It's just, you know, keeping at it. And thank you. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. Where are we? Okay, Aunt, I have three minutes. Be it resolved in the minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have any visitor requests tonight?
No.
Okay. Approval of warrants. Be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payments of the warrants and internal claims, audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. We've got a first reading of policy on UPK. Oh my goodness, John, I'm sorry. Did I stick that? I must have. If you're telling me we've got a. Oh, yep, Treasury. Thank you, John. Be it resolved that Treasury's reports for September and October twenty twenty-three be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, John, here you go.
Okay, so policy eighty-two forty-three is a brand new policy because the district did not have a universal pre-K policy. Obviously you know our UPK program is, is funded through a grant. Part of that grant means that we have to, and, and really the stipulation is, you know, if you have certain sections and you have certain enrollments, what, what do you do? What does the district do if you have more residents wanting to join? So number one, we didn't have a policy. Number two, we needed to actually state in the policy that we would have some sort of lottery and what that would look like. So in working with some other districts who also didn't have a UPK policy and now all of a sudden, wham, we were told that we needed it and had to prove how we would run, you know, a lottery system, we have come up with this universal pre-K policy. It's very short. It's very simple. Basically the selection process. And we haven't run into the situation over the years. Obviously we take our district residents first. So we have two sections that have eighteen kids, so we have thirty-six spots. We haven't reached that maximum. So we are able to allow all of our district residents to be a part of that program and it's full day. The next selection would be any employees, non-resident employees of the district could bring their kids to our UPK. And then if there's still spots, then we would offer it up and say, hey, we have open spots to out of district residents. So that's really the selection process. If for some reason we had more district residents that qualified for UPK and let's say there were forty, we would put all forty applications into a hat and with district people, we would just pull their, you know, numbers and their applications and that's how we would decide that. We, it hasn't reached us yet, but we had to prove that as part of our annual grant funding. So it's very straightforward. Reads just like, you know, most of the other districts. We do transport our kids. A lot of UPKs say that they will transport to but not from, some half day. And other than that, we're, we're good to go. So it's your first reading, but certainly if, you know.
Yeah, sure. So this is my world, right? So a couple of things on this. The way, the, the way you do the lottery is based on the language you use for a timeline for registration. So if you put a timeline for registration in and you haven't exceeded that thirty-six slots, then there's no reason for a lottery. So if you put your registration period is February one to May one, if you hit your thirty-eighth kid, May second, it doesn't matter. You can waitlist them. So you set your own registration dates within the lottery?
We do. If we don't, yes, you're, you're correct. But if you have, if you have forty applications before that deadline and we only have thirty-six spots, that's where this lottery comes into play. Correct?
So my other question then, so on bed stay, you obviously can't report out those out of district students because you're not getting reimbursed. So are they paying us tuition if we have open seats available?
They're contractual. The, the out of district is the OATA members coming in is, for their contract. We haven't had out of district kids come in that are paying tuition.
That says there's a possibility here.
We had a student a few years ago that petitioned the board. They wanted to and then they ended up not. But that's the third layer. So the way the grant kind of dinged us this year, we were flagged for not having all the paperwork under. They just want me to be able to check a box saying, yes, we have this as a procedure if it happens. Even though when I talked to the guy, I said, we haven't had to be on overflow. We haven't had to do this in, you know, five years or so. And he said, it doesn't matter. You just have to have something in case. It's a safeguard.
Gotcha. Now will you have to boot an out of district student if you exceed? So let's say, let's say you've got thirty-four seats by the deadline and you tell an out of district student that they can now take that seat, but August one, you have a district register, you now have to tell that out of district student that they can no longer attend because you can't refuse a, a district student.
We've done that a few years ago. We had two thousand four.
You're really one of the only districts that allows this in UPK, which is amazing, by the way.
It's a hard conversation. We had to do it a few years, well, probably six years ago. I think Kelly was still principal. I was still assistant principal. And we had to tell a faculty member that their child no longer was eligible because we had somebody in the district. It's not a fun conversation.
I'm assuming that's something you broach with them when they sign up, that that's a possibility, right?
Oh, yeah, they all know that. A hundred percent.
That's why there's deadlines. Right. There's not a shock to say, oh my God, you know, you know. There's also deadlines in there, you know, we do periodically have parents call up and say, well, you know, my kid turned five before this date or my kid won't be four until after the date. And, you know, unfortunately, you, you do have to draw a line in the sand. So that's also in there as well.
That was going to be my question. So why do you have to draw that line in the sand? Are they still eligible for the grant? So, so if a family were to want to have their child repeat pre-K rather than go to kindergarten, repeat kindergarten and they were turning five before December first and where there were slots available?
I think that would be kind of on a case by case basis, but your original, yeah.
An ineligible student on our caseload when we are fully funded by this grant.
And now that there's a new audit process in place, we will get.
That would be a very risky maneuver. We would be calling state ed and talking through, we're always assigned a case manager. Our guy is Terry. We'd be calling Terry and have a conference call about that specifically to just see how that would have a negative impact or not on us.
So is that, that's a state mandate that, that age right there? And so then that may disqualify you from the grant funding for that student?
Yes. And now that we are fully funded, I think this is the second year we've been fully funded. Up until this point, we were never fully funded and we were actually kind of upside down. We paid the majority of it out of our general fund, but it was important to us and so it made sense. So we had some flexibility in the past. Now being fully funded, we have to really make sure we have that process carefully.
Josh, any consideration for busing those late fall birthdays with five point harnesses on the bus?
It's tough. That, that.
Just curious. I mean, it's a question that comes up all the time. I, a lot of, so like the Pembroke buses, for example, they've got them and, and they're able to do that, but we don't have that. So I just didn't know if that was ever something that we were.
We've never really thought about doing. We always just have the deadline for, for four years old and three and one. But we have to, I mean, some of the buses you can't retro pit the stuff. I mean, there's certain parents' things you can buy four seats, but.
Then you've got to put the bus aids on there because you have to strap the kiddos in and out. It's.
It can add, it can add to the, the needs.
For sure.
So I mean, the four year olds are, some of them are small enough, let alone three year olds. And there's some kids that have a hard time getting up to that first step. So I think they need a little booster step to get down there. So.
You should have got some of them trying to do the bus drills. Josh was out catching them because they were afraid to jump.
Yeah, the back of the bus is, it's a far, it's a far drop for some of the little four year olds.
I mean, I know it's, it's can be inconvenient for families to drive the first couple of months, but sometimes the maturity, they're just not always ready at three for the bus and that can be kind of a controlled chaos. So.
Sure.
So you must have that conversation with the families and just.
Highly recommend until they.
Well, we talk about the reason why we don't have the harnesses and why we pursue it this way and kind of talk about it. And then we practice a lot. The drivers are really good about practicing when that four year old comes on the bus for the first time and making sure, most of the time they don't cross the roads because Josh is really good about that. But if there is a case, you know, we, they take that very seriously. So.
I saw one other point in here in the health section. We've got the physical, physical examination, the vaccinations. Do we need to talk about potty training for these kids in this policy or is that?
New York State says that they do not have to be potty trained and that it is any adult's responsibility to assist with the potty training needs. And that's one of the reasons that we are fortunate to have healthcare aides. A lot of districts don't. I have a one healthcare aide, you know, she's assigned to one classroom, but she does do both. but she does do both duties if there's an issue. Sometimes that first couple of months of naptime can leave quite the mess when they wake up because they slept, so... But no, New York State for UPK kindergarten, I cannot restrict them. They do not have to be potty-trained.
For me, it's just formatted this, and I'm not, I don't, I don't, this sounds probably really picky, you know, but that one paragraph, the selection process, when I have to read a whole paragraph to understand the selection process, I almost wish there could be some numeracy applied to it. So, like, step one, this is how you qualify, or number one, bullet, like, if this could just be bulleted, and I apologize for, I don't think I've ever requested this, but it's just for me, I had to read this a couple of times, and it's like, well, wait a second, how do I get in? So, I think one of our charges is to make this as easily readable as possible, and I don't know, John, if that could be done. And I don't know if this is, if you do one, two, three with this one, I was looking at this earlier today, or...
Well, it's almost three different sections, right? You're talking about the district-eligible students, then you're talking about the faculty-out-of-district students, and then you're talking about, you know, the kiddo from Elba that wants to come. So, you're talking about three different categories here, so I think that's what you need.
I can number it, I'll put the, you know, parents will be notified of the outcomes at the bottom, and then the selection process, I can...
Perfect. Yeah, just a little...
I could work the other way.
That's fine.
So, maybe we push this off to next month, let me see that, I go from there. Thank you for the input there. Upper reports. Christine, what do you got?
Not, you know, not a lot. Obviously, my spots were reported on the audit reports, so you'll be on the agenda, you'll be accepting those. We also have on the agenda approving the corrective action plan. There were three items on that, you know, one was the excessive, the fund balance in the lunch, in the lunch fund. We did submit our action plan to, also specific to that, to child nutrition. They have approved our plan and how to reduce that. I mean, their goal would be for us to reduce that in one year. So, not going to happen, especially with the new, new funding that we've got for the community eligibility provision. But we do have some things that we put in there, I think with the new CSEA contract. I think that'll also, with the salaries, will help reduce that fund balance this year. The payroll certification, I was signing a different form. Prior to them running the payroll, this is a after-payroll's-already-been-run form, so that's, that's been done and, you know, we've implemented it. And then, you know, one other item from the tax party last year, so the, that's just approving the corrective action plan. Also, as you mentioned, you brought up the reserve, that's on the agenda to approve. And the affidavit of the tax collector's on there, that period is closed and we're keeping with our trend of ninety-six plus percent, so this year it's ninety-six point one-five percent collection for the tax levy. And that's all I have for this.
John?
Yeah, just to keep the board updated, today we had four construction manager companies come in and interview with a team comprised of a handful of teachers, myself, Jordan, Christine, and our architects. And we also have one to finish up coming in for tomorrow, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks, the committee will select our CM for the upcoming project and will provide that information and recommendation to the board. Very pleased with the proposals that we have received, all five companies, we've done our research. It's going to be a tough decision because all five come very highly recommended. It's going to be a very, very tough decision, but very happy with the people that have applied and who we get to select from. We did have our first public forum last night of our capital project and our second one for the public, if you want to attend, is next Monday evening, same time, same place, six PM here in the community room. And I thought last night was very well-attended, a lot of, a lot of great questions and glad people came out and were able to offer us some feedback and, you know, get some of their questions answered. My second meeting this week with the student advisory panel takes place tomorrow afternoon, and I meet with the teacher advisory panel on Thursday. This is going really well. Like I said, we had our first meeting last month, I'm meeting with them monthly. The students are great, a lot of energy, a lot of, a lot of comments and a lot of, you know, just a lot of questions and, you know, a lot of giggling and, you know, what do you want and...
You're giggling, though.
I know, I know, I do.
Are you giggling?
Yeah, so it's good. And then with the teachers, it's, it's good, it's eye-opening. I gave them a little bit of homework and already had a couple of responses back from some of the teachers. And I have an open agenda, like we do with our admin team, that they can put anything on there that they would like to discuss, talk about, and I already looked and there's a handful of things that, you know, they're going to come to the table with, and it's, it's good. It's good, open conversation, and I think it's really going to suit us well moving forward. The other thing I want to mention on the board agenda is the approval of the new teacher's contract. If that is approved by the board, one of the things that I had mentioned to the board previously is that the new start time for the elementary school will be five minutes later to eight-thirty-five. So, I do, upon your approval of this, I do have a parent-squared notification going out to the elementary families set for tomorrow. We're going to start that on December eleventh. So, that'll give basically everybody a week and a half. It will start on that Monday, December eleventh, that the new start time at the elementary is eight-thirty-five. So, I do have on there, Josh, that if you are taking the bus into school, that you can plan on your bus arriving...
Not every, not every bus, though, there's a couple of buses that'll be probably about the same.
Okay, and I said expected three to five minutes late, and that anybody being dropped off by their parents, the doors will open up at eight-thirty-five, not eight-thirty, and this does not affect at all the school day in general, dismissal, pickup times at all. And this has absolutely no effect on the middle high school. So...
Breakfast and everything still, everything's great?
Yep.
Awesome. Get free breakfast.
Yep, still plenty of time. What's that?
My kids like that free breakfast in the morning.
Yeah, and I think there's still plenty of time, we've discussed it, yeah, there's...
Perfect.
I, just a few words on plug power and the news, words I can use somewhere here tonight, or...
Yeah, and I, yeah, thanks for reminding me, Matt. So, Christine, I might circle back to you real quick. And towards the end of the meeting last night, there was a little bit of a conversation about the impact possibly of plug power on the capital project, and I wonder if you had any information to clarify that at all for us?
Well, I, I, so, plug power is pilot revenue, just like, you know, Empire Pipeline is pilot revenue. So, it's general fund revenue, so that supports your budget in the springtime. That is not a direct funding of our capital project, okay? It's kind of indirectly supported by our general fund. Our general fund appropriations of twenty-four million includes our debt service payments. Our debt service payments are funded by state aid, and you know how we try and match that up? So, if you were at the meeting last night, you kind of saw the chart that talks about debt service, the expense, the revenue, and then the local share. And that, in trying to keep that local share steady so that there is no impact to the tax levy. You can't earmark a particular revenue, whether it be plug power, whether it be Empire Pipeline, whether it be a donation, whether it be whatever it is, you don't earmark a revenue for a particular item. So, I don't know where that connection came from, and I apologize if there was anything in last spring's budget process or anything like that that might have tied that to it. But if, if we were to lose a revenue source of that form, whether we do a capital project or not, it's going to be the same conversation. Say we don't do a capital project and I have to lose a revenue source of that magnitude, it's three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, three-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, it's about one point, two point five, one point three percent of our, our general fund budget. Could we accommodate a reduction in expenditures of one point three-five percent of our expenditures? We could do that. We're running at about a five-point, you know, as you saw from, from Mike DeBots' presentation today, we're within five point six percent of our budget in expenditures. We generally run a fund balance and have been able to fund our capital reserve pretty significantly over the past three years. We've got it to a point of three million dollars that we can actually fund this next project with. I'm not concerned if that, that goes away. I don't, I'm not a financial advisor, I'm not, not on Wall Street, I don't watch stock prices, I don't look at that. My gut on this is that I don't think that, I think that they're going to get the funding that they need to finish the work that they, that they're trying to accomplish. That would be my gut on it. I'm not as stressed about that. We've got a couple of other projects that are coming on board, pilots, that, that could help us with that. And we run about three point three percent growth in our state aid each year. Now, I understand that there's that potential down the road of not having an increase that state's looking at some situations. We weathered the threat a few years ago of a twenty percent aid cut that didn't, that didn't happen. We did have a little bit of an aid cut, they kept some transportation aid on us because we didn't transport students that year, but we weathered that pretty well. So, we, we budget pretty conservatively, we are pretty conservative with our expenditures even after budgeting and trying to make sure we meet that or at least have, leave some fund balance on the table. And I'm not, I'm not concerned about it. It's not a direct correlation, though. That three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from plug, from the pilot from Plug Power is not a direct correlation with this project. I hope that answers the question, the lingering questions that are out there.
Yeah, I think probably the community doesn't know how much plug power impacts our budget already because they don't see anything going on out there, but it does, right? It's a, it's a new source of revenue, and I don't know that anybody earmarks it to the capital project, but it is the newest, largest source of revenue that hit our budget that we're already enjoying, so... We're careful to conduct business openly transparent. There was some messages amongst the board about, oh, shoot, Plug Power's in trouble, and Plug Power means a lot to our budget, so I think it's important that we have the conversation, you know, here in front of everybody, that they know we're watching this and that we recognize that it's a big chunk of money to us that seems to be at risk and what would we do if we lose that money?
Well, and we kind of talked about that. You looked at your reserves, you brought up the conversation, what happens? So, if our, if our ERS payment is about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, so if there's a year that we are going to lose a three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar revenue, we have an option right there that we could fund our, that year's ERS payment in our, our budget with use of that reserve. So, we, we have options and we've been very good at funding those reserves to be able to do it. Do we always want to try to increase our reserves? Absolutely. We're going to, you know, our capital reserve, we're going to use this in the next project, correct? We want to make sure that we build that up for the next one that comes around. So, you know, we have options and I'm glad we have those options. We've, you guys have put forth the budget, I mean, I know I give you the numbers and whatnot, but we've been transparent with you guys, you've been transparent with the public. I think you guys have put forth the budgets and you've kept your tax levy at about under one percent for the last eleven, twelve years.
And I'm kind of with Christine on this, you know, I did have a conversation with Mark, you know, kind of asked him what was, what was going on over there. He said, day-to-day operations are as normal as can be, things are going on, things are progressing. And I do, you know, I kind of gave you a little bit of a report. You know, it's a new company coming to a new area, you know, we laughed with, you know, Chuck Schumer's face and hands are all over this, you don't think he's going to let this thing fail. You know, he's, he's bringing this to this area, I think it's going to benefit us. There may be some lulls in, you know, chains, supplies, you know, supply chain, you know, you know, delays, things like that, but, you know, my gut is, you know, this is, this is going to happen, it's going to continue to be a benefit to this district. There are some other projects that we've been made aware of that we're waiting to, to see, so, you know, I'm not at this point too, too concerned. And like I said, if for some reason something happens, there isn't a direct correlation to this capital project, we would still be having these, these conversations, so...
So, if the capital project does pass and new information comes to light, if the community approves it and new information comes to light, you know, immediately thereafter, even though the community has approved the capital project, we do still have some ability to scale it back if...
Yes, absolutely.
Economic conditions more...
Absolutely. Kind of, kind of like, and I don't want to compare it to this last capital project, but just, you know, with some COVID and some things, yeah, there were some things that we had to back off on just because of, you know, the increased price. You know, we try to do everything possibly, there's a lot of value engineering, you know, can, can we still do this, but, you know, is there different materials, is there a different way to construct it? But absolutely, you know, you can always scale back a, you know, capital project that's been approved. You can't, you can't do more, but you can always scale back.
And there were some pieces of that that required board approval, right, to make expenditures or to award contracts, so the, the summit of us will still be able to...
There was a cap, I think it was forty-five, or thirty-five thousand, or what was it?
As far as change orders, yes.
Change orders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, forty, forty...
Yeah, change orders, yep, yep.
Forty thousand?
Well, I don't know what I'm talking about, change orders, I, I mean, if we award a project for a new stadium of five million dollars, even though the community has approved it, I do think there's still some board approvals that are required.
So, yeah, so we're at the process now, we will come to you hopefully fairly short, shortly with a, with a recommendation of who the construction manager would be. There's a contract involved, there is a price tag to that, that would have to be board-approved. And then they start working on, you know, the design and they'll start, you know, depending on who the contract is, some of them have different ways of, you know, getting subcontractors in, which was eye-opening today. Those, yeah, those contracts, those bids, we would have a formal bid process, they would throw that work out there, and we would have, what's good for this area is we hit both Rochester and Buffalo. And all of the construction managers said that to us today, that we're, we're sitting pretty with our project is because we're getting companies from both sides. And prices seem to be, you know, okay, you know, compared to COVID and the supplies, and they don't think that there's too much of a workforce shortage as far as, you know, school projects because, you know, the, the Bill Stadium is pulling people from out of state and some of these larger projects, you know, these smaller companies aren't, aren't going after. So, but yeah, once, once those are awarded, yeah, they would come to you for, for approval. You'd get to see all the financials and who's, who's being hired and who, who's, who's on board.
I think some of the fear with it, it's not that one year, you know, to just trying to, you know, you said, well, we've got our reserves, we can pull back. I think the fear is you lock into this, you know, and then, so, say, we lock into this, we spend all this money and one year into it, something does happen, that we lose that revenue, so now it's not a...
For every year going forward.
Right, you know, so it's not a matter of like, okay, we can get through the next year, okay, but then you're, you know, hoping that something else comes in to fill that void and that the best, the... To me, it's more of that long-term thing, and, you know, with some of your talks, John, you know, I know they said that the, it's a guarantee, it's guaranteed that as long as they're there. But what happens if Plug Power sells the project? If they sell it to another company, that's, that's not all going to just sit there and somebody's going to buy it for pennies on the dollar, so what happens?
So, there would be a new executed pilot with that new purchasing company?
But it's not, it's not guaranteed to be guaranteed, the deal that's in place, that's going to be a new negotiation that's going to...
It would be a new negotiated, yeah, it wasn't, it wouldn't be like they would pick it up, it would be a new...
So, the only way that's guaranteed to us is if Plug stays there.
Correct, because it's, it's based on the... Correct. Because it's, it's based on the size, the acreage, what they actually are doing within it. A company could come in and buy them out and do something and, and double our pilot payments depending on it. There's a, there's a lot that goes into those negotiations.
But it comes near negotiation at that point.
Correct, yep.
It, it's a concern and a risk and important for us to talk about it in the public forum. And so I appreciate your answer to that. I guess we'll just, we'll watch and we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Nick, you're up, Amy. Any news for us?
Not a lot. Just at our high school, our transitions program has done one of their community visits. They actually went out to GCC, which was really nice. Kids got to see, you know, dorm life and what it's like to be on campus, which was really eye-opening for some of them. And then just getting to, you know, review some of the requirements for going to college. But they're looking to do some more college visits. They're gonna do some business visits, things like that, just to start opening, you know, ideas and see if there's, you know, anything out there for them, for some of the kids anyways. And then start building resumes and looking at doing some interning and things like that. So pretty exciting news for them. But other than that, everything's staying pretty kosher and going well.
Thanks, Amy. Connie?
If you read last month's newsletter, I mean, we're always on curriculum instruction is my world. We talked about, or I talked about pacing guides. It's been something we've been working towards. So hopefully, within the month of December and January, both the elementary and the middle high school pacing guides will be posted on our website. They are always works in progress. We're a little district. You'll notice when they're published, not every course has a pacing guide. We have many teachers who teach many different preps and there's literally only so much you can ask them to do in terms of curriculum work and pacing guides anytime. So this will be a live rolling process. Special areas, same thing. I mean, our, our teachers, they teach every single grade level. Up here, it's multiple different preps for like, it might be clay, it might be design and draw. So it will be slowly built out as time goes on. We were gonna continue with this work, this curriculum, this constant cycle that goes around. But we wanted to get something up there as soon as we could, not only to be transparent, but to kind of showcase the hard work that our teachers have been doing. They're really putting a lot of blood, sweat and tears into this. In the middle high school, we've started the assessment piece of the curriculum process, doing that work. And I actually, I didn't even have the chance to tell Matt this, the other day, had a chance to see some of the assessment blueprints that our eighth grade math teachers did. And, I mean, you know, you saw our numbers. We need to work on math. But some of the work that's being done now, really tackling that and looking at priority standards and are we internally assessing what we should be assessing, they're, they're doing really good work. So we really want to get these out there and kind of showcase for you. And this pacing, these pacing guides will help do that. So I'm excited about that.
Thanks, Connie. Lynn?
We're just excited to have the Venture Academy up and running. The H trainers competition is right around the corner. Math Olympia, we had their first competition today. Spelling D is right around the corner. So some of these things that we've kind of created as a result of the post-COVID, we're really excited just to keep going forward with, and our teachers come up with new ideas and new clubs and the kids just continue to love it. And thanks to Josh for always accommodating our transportation needs.
Thanks, Lynn. Casey?
Our last superintendent's conference day, we tested all of our lockdown hardware, software to make sure everything was working well. Things went great. Our first lockdown went fantastic, both buildings. Huge kudos to Lynn and her teachers for creating that nice transition for our little kids and understanding the drill so it's not traumatic. It's as smooth as possible. They really do a nice job. By the time they get to this building, it's quick. They understand what to do. They can actually do the procedures without a teacher in there if they had to. They know what they're doing. So things went really well. John and I attended a training last month and we've kind of been tweaking some of the communication flows. The last lockdown, you got a couple text messages from district office letting you know the drill was going, the drill was over. We tweaked some of our procedures during the lockdown for the middle high school building that have seen them in working well. So we're ironing out some of those things and all of our hardware worked fantastic. So thank you to our custodial crew and our tech department. The latest and greatest in the hardware side is our CVs on the buses. All now will hear the lockdown announcement when it's automated and goes through our Cisco phones. So they will know if something's going on campus. So huge thank you to Alex and Rob who did the, the legwork on figuring out that that is even possible to do. We continue to be at the cutting edge of our lockdown stuff and our CP drill. The blue lights are all working as expected and tested. So we're, we're doing great work.
That's pretty cool. That's super cool. Mr. Peterson?
I had a fabulous morning with some teachers up in Rochester today on some professional development related to grading. And it was just great to have conversations around, there's so many unique practices around grading. I'm fascinated by how we sort of do what we once taught when we were in school ourselves as teachers. And there's, there's some grading practices that can be all over the place. What research is showing us is that there's, there's real damage to be done, that poor grading practices. And the group of teachers that I brought up today at Rochester, we just had a great discussion. We listened to an author, Joel Felbin. And it was just a great morning to talk about grading practices and assessment practices.
Thanks, Matt. Rob, you're up.
Last week I was up in Rochester also for the Nice Gate Conference with two of our teachers, Joe Pollak, our business teacher, and Maggie Gitcher, our middle high librarian. Their focus, they were looking at was the computer literacy standards, the computer science standards, which are really heading our area in twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Everybody's talking about artificial intelligence from the financial side to the education side and the technology side. It's all we're gonna really hear about. I mean, if we think back to like this thing called Facebook social media, like that was the big thing and smartphones were the big thing, so the next big thing is artificial intelligence. And of course, we got people fearing it, that our kids are gonna write essays and we're not gonna know and they're gonna claim it's their work. Then we're hearing, well, teachers are overworked, so they can use artificial intelligence to write this and suggest that and give sentence starters and come up with ideas for delivering curriculum. So we've seen the positive and negative sides of it at this conference. So there's a real good exposure to it. I would say it was year one of that. And I would think the next couple of years, that's gonna be the overarching theme. And then two weeks before that, I was actually presenting in, at the Brainstorm Conference in, in the Pennsylvania area. And that is a conference, small, three, four hundred people. It's for tech directors specifically. So that was really like my kind of people talking about Chromebooks and lockdown systems and phone systems and all the technical stuff. And I have to say, as people were there like singing the praises about like, look at our speakers on the thing, I'm like thinking, yours isn't color. And like, like, look at the LEDs flash. I'm like, that looks like you're in a hospital or something. It's not like modern and stuff. So I was happy to see that what people were pleased to show us about, like, we were leaps and bounds beyond that just based on choices that we made, working with the vendors that we worked with. So it's fun for me to see that, like comparable stuff of what's happening elsewhere to kind of see where we fit in, in the grand scheme of things. So real exciting stuff. I'll be, I was asked to present again, actually, I, I won a four hundred dollar voucher to attend, again, free in Sandusky, Ohio, which is in the first of May for the Brainstorm Conference. So they want me back again to present on Parent Square in Castle. And if I go ahead, the four hundred dollar voucher, I get to go for free. So I just happened to win, I win that door prize. I don't know if it was rigged or not, but my name's pulled from four hundred people, so looking forward to that.
Thanks, Rob. Sounds cool. Paige, anything to report to us?
Yeah, just a few things. So we kind of have winter sports starting and everything. We had, there was a scrimmage today. And the first couple meets and games are coming up here next week, starting soon or two weeks. And everyone's like, we've got the three weeks till Christmas and everything. It's kind of those three weeks that we've gotta get through and everything after Thanksgiving. All our teachers were like, it's tough to come back from the first long break. So this week was, been a little rough, but it's okay so far. And that a lot of the students are excited about the capital project with like the board out there. They're all talking about it and everything. I've heard a lot of talk about, just like looking at it and they think that it'd be really cool, even though some of us won't get to see it because we'll be graduating. But it is super cool. And then a lot of field trips are happening. I'm going on one Thursday. So I think that's good that we're getting to go on field trips, especially as you're older, you don't really think you're gonna go on many field trips. But to just be able to get out and still learn. And then the school dance is coming up and the school play is kind of starting off. So just kind of a little update, what's going on.
Thanks, Paige. I'm curious if you're getting your square dancing piece ready. I know that's what Mr. Lamb's thinking about. He was one of the square dancers. Thank you, Paige. That was great. No, that's true. If you really could square it up out there.
He was like a kindergarten when I was square dancing.
If I could ask you a question for the next board meeting. So one of the things that, that I'm in charge of, that I always give to the board in, in a draft form, and there's, you know, there's a little bit of wiggle room, is, is the school calendar. So in years past, since I've been here, except for this year, we've never had a full February break. This year, you do have one. And it's just how the days line up, how the holidays land, when school starts, when schools end, is really depending on the number of days that I can kind of schedule for days off. So obviously you have the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. You have the four-day Memorial Weekend. You always have, you know, the, usually the day before Christmas through January first. But I'm looking at next year's calendar. And given all of the days, there's a, there's a chance where like January first is on a Wednesday. So the kids would come back on a Thursday, Friday, and then you have a weekend. That's if we have a full February break. But I could take the back two days of the February break and put that in January. And honestly, you would have a two-week, you know, Christmas, December, January break off. But you'd only have really a three-day February break. I'm just wondering, in the next month or so, next few weeks, if you could ask people, you know, are they excited for the February break? When, when do people travel? You know, is two weeks too long at Christmas? You know, where else could we put it? You know, I could even say, geez, I could put the two days before Thanksgiving and you could have a full week at Thanksgiving. I don't have those answers. And I want to do what's right by the community, what, what parents want, what the board wants, what kids want, what works. But there's times where we can kind of play around, you know. So next year, we have the lunar year, the, you know, the solar day off. So that takes a day away. But there's, there's chances that I have to play around where I could move two or three days around. So I'm interested to hear if, you know, are more families traveling because there is a February break? I know I'm gonna be gone. But I just, I just didn't know. Do, do, you know, kids think a February break isn't needed or hey, just having President's Day off is fine? I just, I want to know what your peers feel about the vacations, you know, and if they could have an extended spring break or a Christmas break, or do they like that February break? Let me, let me know. I don't know. Just ask around and report back. We have some time to think about it. I threw it out to the board and we're just kind of, you know, taking a look at it. We usually approve it in February or March, so there's plenty of time. But I just, I just want to do what's, you know, what's good for the community and the families and you guys attended here. So let me know.
Thanks, Paige. On the new business, item eight, be it resolved, that items eight point two through eight point ten be approved by some agenda. Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Eight point eleven, speaking of calendar, be it resolved on the recommendation of Lynn Gayler, elementary school building principal and the superintendent, the board approves Friday, March first, twenty twenty-four is a half day at the elementary school building with students dismissed at eleven AM for the purposes of providing and continuing professional development with the elementary school teachers and the staff that afternoon. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Pete. Any discussion? Just, no, I, I appreciate the half day opposed to two hours here and an hour at least time there. I think the half day allows you to drill down. I myself would really love to have that opposed to writing sub-plans and then not having the sub-coverage and not being able to do it in the first place. So I think this is a great idea. I'd love to hear what your discussion is and where you go with the, that writing curriculum. So that's just my two cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eight point twelve, wrestling club proposal, be it resolved, the Board of Education approved a catch proposal for the Oakfield, Alabama Wrestling Club presented by SRO Jordan Alejandro. He is also seeking to coach this club for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? We, we got your, your, kind of your write-up and I thought it was really well laid out, like even all the way down to the disinfectant spray. That was not a cost I was thinking that we would get. It is part of the, or the tape for the, the mats. I never thought.
Gotta get them to stick you out.
Yeah, right. You gotta get the stink out, right?
Only got to stick you out.
Oh, yeah, they do. Yeah. I thought you were saying something about the stink. I thought you said, gotta get the stink out. I'd say, yeah, well, right. I guess I don't ever consider the stinky part, but. No, I thought it was a really well-written proposal and it, it's exciting. I, I, I don't know if we have any other questions, but now would be the time to ask them if, if we did.
I'm excited to be able to, to do it here. It's like a passion of mine. I was a varsity wrestling coach, the head coach for Lakewanna before I moved to Genesee County. I wrestled my whole life, all through college. And I think I played every sport there is. I think it's, in my opinion, the best sport and it will offer a huge outlet for some kids who maybe don't fall into the traditional sports mold. I don't think it'll compete with the current sports that we do well here, but I think it'll kind of supplement them very well. If you're looking for the football players, better hand-eye coordination, things like that, this type of sport can help. So it teaches people how to be humble and like victory. There's, you know, moments where you'll win and your team's gonna lose because it's an individual and team sport. And you can't necessarily express that. You have to be humble for, for your team there. Or your team does really well and you lose, you have to take that on the chin and kind of go when there's no one you can blame but yourself. There's not a ton of penalties or things like that. It's more an individual sport with that team on them. So I'm excited to see how it gets.
And then it's, it's considered a club, right?
Correct.
And so then for like traveling, I, where, where would you end up going for matches, I guess, right? Matches? I'm not much of a wrestler myself.
So, yeah, they would be matches. So the good thing is with the club team to start and getting kids involved. Some kids might never choose to compete in a tournament or a weekend event or something like that. But if there are, there's tournaments every weekend all over the state. So there could be kids who choose to compete in apron on a weekend. And part of joining this is all, you know, I have a ton of friends in the Western New York area who are active coaches, involved in this. And they might say, hey, we have a five-through-thirteen age group tournament, an apron this weekend with a twenty-dollar admission if you'd like to go. I could arrange with the families to meet kids there. My wife is fully in support of this. She knows how passionate I am about the sport. I have no problem giving up a Saturday to go help coach these kids if they'd like to compete in something. If they just want to learn the sport and see if it's for them before they ever step foot on a match and, and actually compete against someone, I would be happy to teach them that as well. It's also, you know, it's a form of self-defense. It helps with that. It helps with body control, self-confidence.
Diet you were talking about as well.
I'm sorry.
Diet, the diet.
Diet, exercise, all those things. And one of the stigmas with wrestling is it's like meatheads and, you know, it's all, it's a very physical, it's super technical. It is a thinking person's game and you could have the strongest person in the world go up against someone who's just more technically smart, put in more effort, and they're gonna lose every time. It, it's just one of those things that I, I think it's unique to that sport. And it does really teach people a lot about themselves and being humble and it's also co-ed. So, you know, if we have females who'd like to wrestle, New York State just approved girls wrestling. So if later on down the road this ever transitioned to an actual team, it would be another girl's sport as well. So there's a lot of opportunities and it's growing exponentially. It's competed in more countries than anywhere else. It's one of the easiest sports to gain a college scholarship because of the Title IX opponents. It helps because they can have both male and female teams. So there's a lot of benefits to it.
Well, we appreciate your knowledge and passion and wish you the best of success. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Kobe. On the eight point thirteen or one-three, our OHTA contract. Be it resolved at the noon tree, your OHTA contract be approved by the Board of Education, retroactive to July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Justin, if I could just thank you for assisting us in the negotiations. I appreciate the time. It's never, never easy, but, but thank you.
Yeah, I, definitely a different experience for me than what I'm used to. But thank you. Yeah, I, I learned a lot and I enjoyed it. I actually got to interact with people I don't usually get to. So thank you, thank you, John. Carla, I don't think we have any communications tonight?
No.
Okay. Let's go on to personnel. Be it resolved that items 11.2 through 11.6 be approved by consignment agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Tie goes to Natalie. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Seven, resignation. Be it resolved that the board accepts the resignation of Michelle Natty, effective October 25th, 2023? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven eight, resignation. Be it resolved that the board accepts the resignation of Annette Johnson, effective November 24th, 2023? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven nine, resignation. Be it resolved, the board accepts the resignation of Kurt Fisher, effective March 29th, 2024? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second. You got it.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say thanks to Kurt. I think he's, he's done a great job down there in the elementary cafeteria. I know my three kids really enjoyed him. He's done some fun stuff in there and it's an easy place to work in any cafeteria. And I've appreciated his presence down there. So I'll miss Kurt moving forward.
Absolutely.
Get that data to replace. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. An appointment, 11:10. Be it resolved that Stacy Whissenger be appointed to probationary position of Cook, effective October 23rd, 2023? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Got a little delay there, guys. You're all in favor on that one.
Thinking about it.
Yeah. Stacy's great. And this is, she's, she's already employed here.
Yep. She's a service worker.
This is, this is, this is.
Promotion.
Yep. This is great. Congratulations here, but we still have to approve her. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 11:11, winner cheer coach. Be it room, that's a tough one, I think I probably get it wrong. Jasmine, be it resolved that Jasmine Dobson be appointed a winner cheer coach for the 2023-2024 school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 11:12, occupational therapist appointment. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved Mrs. Alexandra Holmes to a 12-month probationary period as a full-time occupational therapist, beginning on January 2nd, 2024? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I get that one. I'm the OT here.
Fair enough.
Somebody's smiling back there. I think it might be the lady we're approving.
Can't start sooner?
So who, what do we got here? We got, you get it, Carla?
Natalie and then Matt.
Okay. Natalie first, though, right?
Yes. Not Maria at all.
No.
Thanks, Carla.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, so this is Ellie Holmes. Just blew our socks off and we're happy to have you here. Get your letter into your current district tomorrow. So the 30 days starts counting. And we'll see you right after the winter Christmas break. You know, relax and we'll get you, we'll get you started on, on the 2nd there. So welcome. She's gonna be great.
Thank you.
Welcome. As soon as you're ready, we're ready.
On the closing remarks. I don't know which way I'm gonna go, Pete.
I think recognize that Pete Beulah for the consistency of that program. I mean, you see other sports go up and down, up and down, but I mean, he just continues to knock it out of the park every year, I feel like. And I think that's, it's hard to do, you know, you don't know what group of kids you're getting or what talent. And he just seems to be consistent, but also Connor DeBois, I can't think of a better kid to represent OA on a big stage like that. And I don't think he gets enough credit because he's just a runner, right? If he was the quarterback making all these records and stuff, you know, he probably would get more credit. But he's a great kid and.
Pete, were you afraid we weren't gonna be able to move Pete off of 2003? Pete, that still burns inside.
Maybe that's the drive, right?
Yeah, exactly. We figured it out.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. I think our ELA program, I think, I remember sitting here four years ago, whatever, and we were just like at this point with reading and we're like, what are we doing? And you guys said, this is what we're gonna do. And you're starting to see the fruits of those labors come through each year. And I think last year, we really started to see it. And I think it carried over to this year. So it's great that you guys have put, I know you guys have put a lot of time and effort into that program and we're starting to see that. And it's great to see that you're already tackling that math. And I think from a board member of like asking for that data, that's what we hope to see out of it. It's like, okay, we recognized this is where we need to focus. And, you know, you guys are already on it, formulating plans. And that's what, to me, that's what looking at that data is. It's like, okay, let's look at it. This is where we're at. This is what we need to attack. And it's great that you guys are already working on that. And I think the, the assistance that you guys also alluded to as well as far as, you know, the help flex for those kids and stuff, the communication that this year you guys, like I think it's been good up in the middle high school, like the stuff that we've done with the Saturday tutoring and stuff like that. But I think just the communication getting out there. As a parent that gives their kids ultimatums if their grades are below a certain standard, it's nice to even just be able to go on school till under Friday and say, hey, I know where they're at. You're not waiting for that progress report. But I'm a little quicker than you guys are on getting out notifications. But I had a kid that was out, he was out sick for a week or whatever. And, you know, it's always, oh, yeah, I turned in all my stuff. Well, then, end of the week, you're like, you didn't get that turned in. When we were kids, we would have skated with it till the next marking period. But the ability, I think, just to be on top of that, monitor where your kids are. But then the teachers as well, putting the extra effort out. The kids get it to be quick and all that stuff. It's great to appreciate this stuff.
Nice, Pete. Natalie?
So going into this board meeting, I wasn't sure which direction I wanted to go, if I wanted to be thankful for everything leading up to Thanksgiving or if I wanted to be gifting and getting for Christmas. And I think you all as a district are wonderful in all aspects of this. You are, I'm thankful for you every day. You gift our children with wonderful knowledge and we're getting a great product out of it. So looking at the Christmas season, I think it's important to not only gift, get, be thankful, but creating those memories for the kids moving forward. So being able to create a district where we can come in and reminisce, walking in, seeing Mr. Callens' old winter display just warmed my heart. So it's just nice knowing that we can go into these seasons with such warmth in our hearts.
Jeff?
I'm gonna sort of echo, you know, Paige with the field trips. Like, you know, my kids have gone on a couple now and they love, you know, the, the college one went, went very well. And I, you know, I come home and say, you know, this place wasn't too bad. And, you know, and very excited to go to the Albright Knox this, what, Thursday, right? And, and also, you know, Connor DeBois, unbelievable. I opened up to click down the Democrat Chronicles more and they're like, two, six or five runners are top 20. And I was like, man, gotta be one of them. And, you know, he was two seconds, you know, within two seconds of the other kid from section five. So just awesome and congratulations to him. You know, and good things in the future, I'm sure, so. That's it for me.
Thanks, Jeff. Maria?
Thanks. Yeah, a lot of what's already been said. Those ELA scores were so encouraging. I remember the meeting where we all came together and we were asking for that data. We were making that push. So to see that come to fruition the way it hasn't, and it makes sense, right? Like your, your ELA trickles into every subject area. So of course, that's where you're going to start. And I know that the teachers have worked very hard to get to where they're at. And you're right, one thing at a time. I'm excited to see what they're going to do with the math component now. Because as I said earlier, I know that the behaviors that we are seeing as a society are bigger behaviors. And we're asking a lot of the teachers in terms of that social emotional support. So kudos to them for everything that they're doing. I'm excited about the concert season coming up. That's always a fun time of year. I also wanted to give a quick shout out to all of the bus drivers. And just, you know, Josh, your team is, they are always just so positive and happy. And I, I tell you, it like warms my heart to see my kids all run up those steps to their bus driver. And maybe she's not supposed to hug them. But she does, she gives, she just gives my kid that hug. And it's like, man, that's just such a good way to start the day. And the same thing when they get off the bus, she's always so warm. And just, I hope you had a great day. And it's just always been such a positive experience. And, you know, we're really entrusting them to keep our baby safe on the road. I mean, you saw the black ice out there tonight. And we just, we've got a good crew. So thank you for that and thanks for all that they do. And yeah, that's it for me.
Matt?
Yeah, like Paige said, I was at Chloe's basketball scrimmage this morning. So looking forward to the winter sports season starting. I'm now a youth basketball coach for the first time in my life. So continue to be thankful for being able to use these facilities. I think the facilities are probably getting busier and busier with the local travel teams that are, that are coming in on the weekends. Appreciate being able to use that. I was gonna mention the transportation thing with the weather. Good luck tomorrow morning and thank you for everything that they're doing. And then the holiday concerts coming up. Looking forward to that. We'll be there for that.
Matt? Jackie?
I think I just wanna highlight the inclusivity, I think, of the district. And just in the recent coming to the Capitol Project versus the public forum last night, that was last night, right?
Yep. Yeah. Yes, it was. Not that tomorrow night, but last night.
Another one next Monday. But yeah, it was really nice to, to have that input. I appreciate from the district's input. And I know in the community, it may seem on the outside at a high level that there's seven of us up here and John and admin making decisions that just happen. And we don't know what's going on at the, the levels far below from all the way up. And, and I will say, it's been nice for me to even see in an inside perspective the amount of teachers that are asked when, when all these things are going into play. The, the students, you know, the, the program leaders. Everything is just very much at a much deeper level, which I really, really appreciate. And I like to highlight that because I think it's really important that, you know, even the public forum, when people are here and they can have that explanation. We, we hear it. We hear it all the time. We, we ask questions. We have those opportunities. So it's really important and I appreciate the public coming. And I encourage for the next Monday to come because I think it's really, really important. We do take that stuff into consideration and I think it's, it's really important. We like to hear that voice. We appreciate it and it helps us make decisions for not only now, but these are, these are visions. These are long-term. And, you know, as Maria said, things are changing. 2023 is so different from when kids are coming through, when we went through. And everybody's just, it's different. Everything is different. And you can only make decisions based on the information you have in front of you at the time, in, in the past. I mean, your past is a really good indicator of what, what future can be. So we pay attention to that. We look at that. Can't predict the future, but certainly we're doing the best we can to look at all those factors. So I appreciate it. Thank you. And thanks to the district for keeping that inclusivity because I think it's really important.
Thanks, Jackie. I hate to be redundant, but for me, the pride that's been building that I've had or as I continue to be on this board. For Matt, referring to the, you know, the accessibility to these gyms I'm coaching as well. And it's so nice to have a smiling face at the door. Joyce, I met, who seems like a wonderful person. And our facilities here are really top-notch. They're clean, they look great. And I really do appreciate the effort that's there.